Well. Things I can add, you were talking about this before.
That's good.
She was talking about this, just like. My daughter and her view in this worm, they have fire, they have smoke detectors mounted on the microwave. And it's like, it's like a microwave is plugged into a smoke detector. And then it senses the smoke. It's a warning system. So all they just have there, what that does is it stops.
Yeah, okay.
It stops, she, the microwave falls.
Okay.
They talked about it. I don't believe they had them either. I wish they did, because they could cut those down. I could try.
Very well. Yeah, no, and I think that's.
Hello.
Well, we still, we're doing that.
Good, how are you?
If they continue to have false alarms, we just, I know we do have that.
I laughed out loud when I read your response where you said, yes, I told the E O P what to do.
They put it on my, yes, that's right at all. I think we need to take it off my, and they didn't. They waited till they heard it from the expert that I had on. Speakerphone.
Yeah.
And then they took off. So they might have seen it, but they might have caused it because they might have created a bonus of that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I put that out there because I don't think a lot of people know that. And people I know get in these situations.
Yep. Well, I, I would say the vast majority of people I know in San Diego have encountered the rattlesnake in their homes, right upside.
And I know several people that haven't been doing any research at all.
Yep.
I've stepped down to work with their people. Sector one, a friend reaching to, like a little push in his backyard in Colorado.
Yep. My friend Dan went to take out the garbage.
Hello.
Outside, they had a wall, and then the garbage camp was here, not just past the driveways. So the snake had come down and curled up on it. So he went and he was about ready to raise it up when I saw that.
This weekend?
They call the fire department in California, that's what they do.
It's more than one way to solve it. It's still unlikely that it just didn't stop until you first went in. And it literally sounded harsh. And like eighty seven percent of the students used to buy it to take it from their pockets. Around time.
Well, it sounds about like parents weekend.
I think it's been, that, in research to work. Ninety percent of the individuals in this case, very calm, very nice, too aggressive. And then one will just be like, you never smell.
Sort of like people.
They're like people, yeah.
Yep, alright. Chantel's here.
Yeah, I got, uh. But I wasn't gonna work on that. Well, it's, but, but the problem country stores of every now. How did that thing go, you know, when I had the football player next year? I heard it was three, three, four years ago.
So it does accurately.
I knew it.
Our department had a five pin on Saturday.
Right, right. I'm trying to remember the last thing I saw on Tuesday. Yes. We know he does, so he went off the cliff.
No, we've been playing.
Well, it shows like. He, either like, he's right next to it and he's not looking good, like he's gonna, looking like he's gonna jump.
He got bronchitis.
Was that the last one? I really like, um, Tom Bombadil.
Did we hear anything back from our D C's?
Like, I was interested to see what they would do with that.
Landfill D C's are ready. Do they have a response to us not giving them?
Yeah, the one dwarf is like, the king is kind of. Sometime.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Heather to call the roll, please.
Mr. Pretherton.
Here.
Ms. Ragoo.
Here.
Mr. Bracken.
Here.
Ms. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mayor Snively.
Here. Counselor Smith is under the weather and will not be with us tonight. Alright, uh, we will do the pledge of allegiance, if you would like, you can join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and I will move now to approval of the agenda, if someone would like to move that.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, are any changes or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Agenda's approved and will move to public participation, and I have the honor to read a couple of proclamations this evening. The first one, whereas ageism refers to the stereotypes, how we think, prejudice, how we feel, and discrimination, how we act towards others based on age. And whereas there are an estimated eighty-three thousand adults in Butler County, age sixty or older, who were impacted by ageism. And whereas ageism toward older adults affects their health, their longevity, financial well-being, and the economy of the city of Oxford. And whereas preventing ageism in education, employment, housing, culture, and healthcare will benefit everyone. And whereas recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that older adults are respected and portrayed as capable, competent, effective, and valued in all areas of society. And whereas ageism awareness and preventing ageism is beneficial to all citizens by improving quality of life within the city of Oxford. Now therefore, I William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, hereby proclaim October ninth, twenty twenty-four, Ageism Awareness Day in the City of Oxford. And urge all citizens to recognize the importance of combating ageism, promoting inclusivity, and working together to create a more just and equitable society for people of all ages. And I believe, Jennifer, you might be accepting this.
Back in the day, there would have been a lot of flash.
Are we allowed to woo-hoo here in the chambers? We want to thank you for recognizing this and doing this proclamation. Uh, we certainly, um, Age Friendly Oxford and others within the community that are passionate about making sure that Oxford is an inclusive place for people of all ages. Appreciate this, and we will be having some events and things that'll be advertised next week for Ageism Awareness Day as well. So if you don't follow Scripps Gerontology Center and Age Friendly Oxford, you should do that, so there'll be some education pieces and other things up as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we have a second one. Whereas Caroline Scott Harrison was born in Oxford at two South Campus Avenue on October first, eighteen thirty-two. And whereas her father, John Witherspoon Scott, was a professor at Miami University, and her mother was Mary Neal Scott. And whereas Caroline met Benjamin Harrison in Cincinnati while her father taught at Farmers College. And in nineteen fifty-two, Benjamin graduated from Miami University, and Caroline graduated from the Oxford Female Institute. They married in Oxford on October twentieth, eighteen fifty-three, in her parents' home at one thirty-one West High Street. And whereas Benjamin won the U.S. Presidential Election in eighteen eighty-eight, and Caroline and Benjamin left for Washington, D.C. in eighteen eighty-nine. Benjamin Harris became Harrison, became the twenty-third President of the United States when he was inaugurated on March fourth of that year. And whereas Caroline was the first in the White House to have a decorated Christmas tree, and she was also responsible for having electricity installed in the White House. And whereas an advocate of education for women, Caroline agreed to raise funds for the Johns Hopkins Medical School in eighteen ninety on the condition that women would be admitted on the same basis as men. And whereas Caroline became the first President General of the newly formed Daughters of the American Revolution in eighteen ninety. And whereas Caroline Harrison's contributions as First Lady unfortunately are often overlooked, but she did much to further equality for women. And her plan for White House renovation contributed greatly to her future evolution. And whereas she died in the White House on October twenty-fifth, eighteen ninety-two, and was mourned by the nation. Funerals were held both in Washington, D.C. and in Indianapolis, Indiana, where she is buried at Crown Hill Cemetery beside her husband, who died in nineteen oh one. And whereas a sculpture of Caroline Scott Harrison now sits in the backyard garden of the Oxford Community Arts Center, illuminating her importance to our community. Now therefore, I William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, hereby proclaim October first, twenty twenty-four, as Caroline Scott Harrison Day in the City of Oxford. And I urge all student, uh, citizens to celebrate her importance here in Oxford and as First Lady. I think you're gonna pick this up, like.
Alright, so, good evening, Mayor Snively, and members of the council, thank you for letting me talk. I know we are here to celebrate Caroline Scott Harrison, who is arguably Oxford Community Arts Center's most famous graduate, if not one of the more famous graduates from our lovely city. I do love to take this opportunity to be before you to talk a little bit more about the Oxford Community Arts Center. So this is shameless plug night, and I apologize for that, so, um. Are we ready? Okay, there we are, there we are. Um, there was, there is music with a couple of these things, but if the music doesn't play, just hum amongst yourselves, and that's what we do when we're in the art. So I'm excited to share with you today why the Oxford Community Arts Center remains vital to the greater Oxford community. Make sure this goes, maybe not. Alright, you're gonna help me out, you're. I'm pointing it at your computer, I'm almost.
We now have two people who cannot make it work.
You started it.
Sure.
If Mike cannot make it work, it doesn't, doesn't work.
Uh, I promise I can be entertaining for five minutes, but I don't know that I can be entertaining for the entire presentation, so. Yeah, I have some fun inter- animations, so, um, as you know, we are a nonprofit community arts center housed in the historic one hundred and seventy-five-year-old Oxford Female Institute. Starting our twenty-third year, we've made great strides with three core goals, showcasing diverse visual arts, hosting educational and inspiring events, and engaging in community outreach. Our mission is to enrich lives, to preserve Oxford historical heritage, and foster artistic expression across all ages and abilities. In twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we curated over twenty-four exhibitions featuring two hundred and three artists and seven hundred and three pieces of art. Our three gallery spaces are vibrant hubs of creativity. Our live performance series featured fifty-nine artists, fifty-one of whom are Ohio natives, through twenty-one performances with a focus on cultural diversity, including Taiwan classical dance. Our chocolate meltdown event welcomed over eight hundred and sixty-five participants on one of the coldest days in January. And although altogether, we've reached over ten thousand participants in our events and classes, and our robust online presence with fifty-five hundred followers on social media and twenty-three hundred newsletter subscribers connects us even further. With grants from the Ohio Arts Council, the Arts Wave United Fund of Cincinnati, the Greater Oxford Community Foundation, and the City of Oxford. We bring memorable cultural experiences to Oxford citizen. Our newest signature event, Ox Chocks the Walks, could not have happened without the support of the Greater Oxford Community Foundation and the City of Oxford. These are two very short videos from our event in April. And I promise we did follow the ordinance and all the chalk was on. This was our professional chalk artist, and then we showcased one of our resident artists, Floyd Grace, in dance, and a recital performance in the outdoor pavilion. We had food trucks, craft vendors, and over three hundred participants for this community engagement event, which was free to the community. Community support, as I said, in twenty-three, twenty-four, was unprecedented, with over two hundred and sixty individuals and businesses donating to the OCAC's annual campaign, sponsoring a live performance or an art exhibition. Eighty-five volunteers gave over two thousand hours, saving the OCAC over sixty thousand dollars and making our work possible. In all, the OCAC organized a hundred and nineteen arts experiences, from classes to exhibits to performances and community events. And certainly, enjoying our gala is just one way the OCAC stands as a dynamic cultural asset. But the OCAC's Program Committee annually reviews a strategic plan to evaluate our capacity for community impact. By collaborating with over twenty-one Oxford organizations and Miami University departments, we're able to increase our community impact through a wide array of programs and initiatives. And it's a heartwarming testament to the diverse community that we engage in our cause. With a grant from the Kiwanis Club of Oxford, fifteen students were granted scholarships to offset the cost of arts education. And the Greater Oxford Community Foundation funded the facilitation of the Free Art Club at Talawanda Middle School, impacting over twenty-five middle school students through the school year. Working with the City of Oxford allows us to host events like the summer movies in the park on our outdoor pavilion, bringing families together for a shared cultural experience. And our annual community engagement events like Ox Chocks a Walk takes the arts experience to the streets and to the great outdoors, seeking not only to enliven our neighborhoods, but show how accessible art can be. Building community with the City of Oxford and the OCAC enriches our community and makes it a great place to live. To close, I invite you to enjoy a brief, two-minute video by videographer Sam Van Vliet, showing just some of the smiling faces at last year's Howl at the Moon, made possible by your support. Hopefully, it's a play a little smoothly, but we'll see. Don't smile after this. We have twelve outdoor activities, face painting, free kiddies for the kids, we can turn the tree with our resident artists on the floor, pumpkin chunking is one of my favorite activities that we have. Head over fifty-five volunteers, including thirty students from Miami, homeless with this event. It's a three-hour event that happened this year on October twenty-ninth, from five to eight, and it is completely free. It's charging, I think, for the seven. Thank you, it is always a joy to stand in front of you, and I hope that you've enjoyed tonight's presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will hear from Carol Michael on the twenty twenty-four Sharefest. Welcome, Carol.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There too. I am pleased to present the two thousand twenty-four Sharefest report. The two thousand twenty-four Sharefest was held on Thursday, May sixteenth, through Tuesday, May twenty-first. This was our nineteenth year implementing Sharefest. Quantities collected, we picked up materials from all residence halls on campus and accepted drop-offs at our Chestnut Fields parking lot location from off-campus students and community members. This year, we diverted over seventy-three tons of food, clothing, furniture, household goods, and e-waste from the landfill. Our beneficiary groups. Goodwill of Greater Cincinnati received seven trailers full of goods weighing one hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty pounds, that's fifty-five point nine eight tons. TOPS, the Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services, received three thousand two hundred and eighty-six pounds of food for their clients. In addition to two thousand one hundred and fourteen pounds of materials, which are passed along to several families connected with the Family Resource Center, that's one point six four tons. Open Hands Pantry in Hamilton received an estimated ten point five tons of food and materials to support their operation. Open Hands also accepted about fifty foam mattress pads, which usually all go to the dumpster. They give them to homeless people who are living outside and use the pads to sleep. Parkview Arms Residence Council received approximately two thousand pounds of furniture and household goods for a number of families in their community, that's one ton. Thread Up Oxford received one thousand two hundred and sixty-two pounds of clothing, hangers, and furniture for their operation in Oxford. Some of the textiles went directly to families in Oxford, that's point six three tons. The International Student Scholars and Services Office at Miami University received seven hundred pounds of kitchen items to distribute to incoming international graduate students who arrive in the U.S. with no kitchen items and very little funding, that's point three five tons. In an effort to divert more mattresses from the landfill, we partnered with New Life Furniture Bank in Cincinnati. They were very selective on which mattresses they accepted. During two pickups, they received eighteen mattresses at an estimated weight of two thousand twenty pounds, or one point zero one tons. Coen Recycling hauled away eight Gaylords of e-waste, including three full buckets of batteries. They reported diverting one hundred and forty-one pounds of mixed batteries, one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven pounds of mixed e-waste, four hundred and forty-nine pounds of tube T Vs, and forty-seven pounds of lead-acid batteries, for a total of two thousand three hundred and eighty-four pounds, or one point one nine tons. Butler County Success Program is a group of community school liaisons serving families in almost all of the Butler County public schools with the purpose of eliminating non-cognitive barriers to academic success. This year, we had approximately five success liaisons, one college intern and one volunteer participate in Sharefest, receiving goods ranging from backpacks to microwave ovens and everything in between. We estimate we took about three thousand three hundred pounds in one trailer and five S U V loads. These goods returned to four Butler County school districts and will be given directly to low-income families in need, that's one point six five tons. Volunteers, we are proud of the over fifty volunteers in the community who helped make Sharefest possible, including my Sharefest board members, Sam Perry, Secretary, Karen Baker, Treasurer, Rob Abowitz, Chair of Planning Committee, Chantel Ragoo, Sha- Shauna Rosenberg, and Olivia Heron, the Director of Sustainability at Miami University. Site coordinators were Carol Katz, Carla Blackmore Rice, Rob Rollins, and Alice Lott of TOPS. Pickup volunteers were Kate Rizmanier, Advocate for Parkview Arms Resident Council, Jamie Pressman for Parkview Arms Resident Council, Jane Fields, Steve Chapin, Cora Allen, Susie Hummel from TOPS, Linda Simons from TOPS, Sherry Martin from TOPS, and several others from TOPS and our community at large. There were twenty-four volunteers from Open Hands Food Pantry in Hamilton. We also had approximately ten paid staff from Goodwill of Greater Cincinnati, including two supervisors. We were also proud of the efforts provided by twelve student members of the Talawanda Boys Tennis Team with the guidance of Peter Thomas. Marketing. With the help of fifty-one Miami University student volunteers, we hung two thousand door tags on rental properties across Oxford to remind them to participate in Sharefest. In coordination with the Miami Associated Student Government Secretary of Off-Campus Affairs, we sent two emails to over seven thousand five hundred off-campus Miami University students. We posted about Sharefest on several Facebook pages, including Miami University Parents and Families, Oxford Talk, and Oxford Neighborhood Share. The City of Oxford provided information about Sharefest in its move-out guide on the city website and social media. We posted several times in the Miami Student Life Instagram account. We hung posters on almost a hundred and fifty dumpsters throughout the city of Oxford. Our partners at Goodwill also sent marketing emails and social media posts. Expenses. Our expenses continue to be very modest, thanks to gifts and kind from the City of Oxford, which provided two rol- roll-off dumpsters for damaged and unacceptable donations, and Miami University, which permitted the use of a section of Chestnut Fields parking lot and provided signage for the lot. Our partners at Thread Up Oxford also provided the use of their large van for doing pickups. Our other expenses, which amounted to under five hundred dollars, were covered by past donations from individuals and churches in the city of Oxford. Off-campus and community donations. This year, we recorded over seven hundred and ten drop-offs of donations from students who live off-campus and their parents and members of the Oxford community. This was a thirty-seven percent increase from two thousand and twenty-three. Once again, we had a lot of community members taking advantage of the free e-waste recycling, which was enabled by our partner at Butler County Recycling and Solid Waste. Final thoughts. Overall, it was a very successful year for Sharefest, we completed our nineteenth year. Members of our planning committee have discussed some minor adjustments for next year, but nothing major. I thank each and every person and organization that made Sharefest success this year, and also those of you out there who helped as well. We continue to appreciate the partnership with the City of Oxford and welcome your continued support and guidance in this important endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol, we appreciate it. Sharefest is always so important to our community, and it's amazing that you're able to recover seventy-three tons that otherwise, that otherwise would have gone to the landfill, so we appreciate it very much. Okay, our next item is a notice to legislative authority from Cherry Tree Marketing on West Spring Street, and Doug, you were gonna.
Yeah, I can make a few comments, so, as you remember, uh, earlier in the summer, we voted on this economic development transfer, a Trex transfer liquor permit. So it was a permit being transferred from a business in Cincinnati to this location in Oxford. So this is a two-stage process, we now have this notice to legislative authority as the second step. And so city council can request a hearing or not request a hearing, so it's up to you, and I would recommend that you not request a hearing. This is a D five and D six permit. Uh, D five is spiritus liquor, uh, on the premises for consumption only, and then D six has to deal with the Sunday sale of liquor. And this is for, uh, Brick House Cafe, uh, which is, uh, owned by Cherry Tree Marketing LLC.
Okay, thank you very much, I would entertain a motion to receive it. Okay, thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to receive it without comment?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Now, we go to other public comments. So if anyone here would like to address council on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, or if it's not in the consent agenda, or if it is in the consent agenda, then you can come up now and give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. Seeing no one jump up, I will assume that that is a message that we have no other public comments. We thank you for being here. We'll move then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are any items needing removal? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Post. Thank you very much. We'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a $250,000 grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Public Safety to engage in and coordinate as lead agency for the countywide OVI task force.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved, seconded. All right, thank you very much. And JJ, you're gonna lead us on this one. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Oxford Division of Police does serve as the lead agency for the Butler County OVI Task Force. We contract with retired Sergeant Pete Rising to administer this grant. The grant is, we were awarded $250,000 for the county. We distribute that amongst the 13 agencies in Butler County and put on OVI patrols and OVI checkpoints in accordance with the grant. So that's what this resolution will allow us to accept that grant and move forward.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. Any council questions or concerns?
It's a wonderful program. It's great to get the grant dollars to do it and to be able to administer it.
All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to the second.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a new agreement with Oxford Township, Butler County, Ohio, and authorizing the city of Oxford to provide fire protection and emergency medical services to Oxford Township pursuant to the terms of the agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Doug, you're gonna...
Yes. So the city of Oxford has an agreement with Oxford Township for the provision of fire and EMS services in the unincorporated portion of the township. The current two-year agreement expires December 31st, 2024. Under the current agreement, Oxford Township contributes $158,000 per year. Both parties reached a tentative agreement for a new four-year agreement at $200,000 per year, which is a 26.6% increase. As you know, the calculation of a new agreement begins with the current 2024 operating budget for the Fire EMS Fund. We then subtract EMS billing revenue and then multiply the result in net amount by the percentage of fire and EMS calls for Oxford Township, which in 2023 were 6.5%. The new agreement includes completing annual fire inspections for all commercial establishments in the unincorporated portion of the township, which is less than 12 establishments. This was previously done by the Oxford Division of Fire and EMS, but it was not in the agreement. So we have on the agenda tonight a resolution to authorize the city manager to sign this new proposed agreement with Oxford Township trustees, and I would recommend adoption of the resolution.
Okay, thank you very much, Doug.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the resolution? Okay, council, any questions, discussion?
I think can't pass up an opportunity to just highlight that the costs of providing fire and EMS have gone up, and everybody is having to bear some of the costs. We're having to renegotiate our new cost with our neighboring jurisdictions. Miami and Oxford voters in November, it's to provide the protection has gotten more expensive, and that's just a reality that all the communities are having to face.
That's exactly right. And issue two on the November ballot will be the opportunity for Oxford citizens to really say, yes, we want protection from fire and for EMS. And if it's not passed, I don't know really what we'll do, to be honest. So we're very happy that the township is willing to step up and do their part. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Thank you very much. Resolution is adopted. We'll move to the third.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a local public agency agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the development of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase 5, PID number 117001, Agreement Number 37570.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi, Mike.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. So I have a drawing to show you that shows the scope of this project. We're talking about Phase 5 here. That will connect Tallawanda High School to Tallawanda Middle School, and it also will include the Chestnut connector, which will cut through the landfill area and connect to Butler County's RTA facility and our future Amtrak rail platform, as well as the rest of the city sidewalk system. So when this is completed, we will have completed about three-quarters of the loop from 732 and the brown-covered bridge, all the way around to 73 and the high school, Pepper Park, over the railroad where Mr. Perry has just gotten a grant to help us fund that. This is Phase 5, where Assistant City Manager Green has gotten approximately $2.8 million grant to help fund this stretch. We've just completed Phase 4, and we have the trails built through the community park, and we have an easement commitment from the Knowles. So a lot of progress is being made right there for the Oaks Trail. We do need council and city manager authorization to proceed as the local partnering, local public agency with this contract for ODOT and federal highway funds. So the project's estimated at about $6.6 million for this Phase 5. So it's a very expensive part of the trail. As I said, we have an approximately $2.8 million commitment from OKI and using CMAC funds for this. The agreement outlines our obligations as the LPA. It involves how we go about using federal funds. And there's plenty of strings attached with that. Everything from right-of-way acquisition and how we do it, and who checks our work, to plan approval, how we award contracts, how we administer the contract and manage the construction of the project. Lots to do with that. The great part of that is we don't have to pay ODOT to administer the project for us. Our city engineer, Scott Otto, is LPA-qualified, and just on this leg alone, he'll save us about $405,000 to manage the administration of this project. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I think all of council appreciates the diligence with which staff has been getting funding from outside agencies and government entities to help fund this. We get the local match from the voter-approved levy, and what you do with that is amazing because we're able to accomplish so much, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors, any comments?
I just would, what this, we're trying to do some really big things in the city of Oxford, and we've gotten grant dollars that help pay for the infrastructure, but we're doing it with roughly the same amount of staffing. And so this, the capacity to do all this big work, to take on this work, to do this LPA work and save $405,000 on this project, then you've got another 100 and something on the next one. That just shows how productive our staff is.
Absolutely.
So it takes a lot to do these projects.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Mike. We next have a resolution that you will read for us.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a local public agency agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the development of Oxford Amtrak Station Project, PID number 118586, Agreement Number 38696.
Yay. All right. Who would like to move to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike?
Again, the same type of contract with ODOT to receive these federal funds. We expect this project to cost about $2.7 million when we finally get to build it. And this grant is for 80% of eligible cost, up to approximately $2.1 million. My and share of this being funded by the federal government.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors?
Like was modest, but the cost savings to us on this was $183,500, right? By doing the LPA work, which is a big amount of money for us.
It goes to city engineer Scott Otto. He does a bang-up job. And I must say, normally, they're a department of, they're a division of three people. One of those people is on long-term healthcare issue. So they're doing this with two people, and they do an amazing job. Thank you.
They really do. I think it's worth saying to those who ask on pretty much a weekly basis, is Amtrak really coming? Yes. That's just the answer. It's really coming, and we're doing our best at each step of the way. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, posed. Resolution is adopted. You can read the last one.
A resolution placing a moratorium not to extend beyond April 1st, 2025, on new short-term rentals within the R1 MS, R2 MS, R3 MS, and MU zoning districts in the city of Oxford, Ohio.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you. This is a follow-up, and I apologize for the delay on this from previous council meetings and discussion about a moratorium, not just the outlying areas of the community for short-term rentals, but potentially also the mile-square kind of area. There was a moratorium that actually ended yesterday for no, not having any new short-term rentals or Airbnbs in the outlying areas, R1B, R1A, those types of districts outside of the mile square. Some new regulations were put into place and went into effect earlier in September, which now requires primary residents only for those short-term rentals, which council's intent and the city's intent has been to help to not lose any existing affordable housing. That was one of the goals of the comprehensive plan. And although we haven't had a large amount of homes being converted, there have been some, and I think there's been some concern among the community and council to try to prevent that from happening at a greater scale. And we have comments from a couple council members. Looking at the mile square and map I have on the screen here actually shows active short-term rentals in the mile square area. So you could see they've been, this is last 12 months. We don't have exact locations of these, but the intent here is not to look at necessarily the address, but just kind of get an idea of the activity levels. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's every day, every week, every month, but there's some kind of activity over the last 12 months. And so what a moratorium would do in the mile square area, which is not necessarily just the historic mile square of the exact geographic boundary, but the zoning districts that we have drafted for you to consider, which go a little bit beyond that, which would be the, on the screen there, it's kind of that, kind of that lighter shade that goes actually a little bit on the north side of Sycamore Street. There on the northern side of the mile square, so those residential districts. And also the MU district, which believe it or not, has a handful of privately-owned houses in it as well, over by the Cedar Drive area, Silvor, over in there on East Chestnut Street. And so the intent of council's interested in this would be to put a hold on no new short-term rentals in that area. There are a lot already, but based on the way that the rental permit program that we've had for many years, that right was granted to those applicants and those renewals for those. And so if, in the renewal process for the new regulations and the forms that we've created now under the new regulation, the renewal applicant would need to opt in for that. And if they did not choose to do that, then that would, they would essentially be doing away with that right to continue doing that. That does happen from time to time. As people, you know, we have new hotels being built. The market may be changing, and so that could be an opportunity for council to see some potential preservation for housing stock. Whether or not it goes to new home buyers or to market rate for rent, housing remains to be seen. But it does open that, potentially that opportunity. So a moratorium would put a hold on new units being used for that and so that regulations could potentially be considered by planning commission to add these mile-square area zoning districts to that same primary residence requirement. I've got six months in here as a potential timeframe. It could be shortened to about four and a half months. If, I know we've had these discussions before, if necessary, to, I think, February 21st. But six months is just kind of a round number. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Sam? Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors? I guess my question for all of us is, do we need all of those districts to be included in this resolution? So it's a question.
The map with the dots, so those are any type of short-term rentals or non-owner-occupied short-term rentals?
Any type, yeah. They're basically any ones that have been advertised on Airbnb and VRVO that have actually been used through those platforms.
Because I'm just looking at, trying to recognize where they are. I feel like most of them, I don't know. Would it be, okay, so those would be grandfathered in then, correct? Like, let's say with the, from, or they'd be excluded from the moratorium, but then they would have to opt in as a more term?
When they renew, correct.
Okay.
That's our, that's our current legal interpretation. Councilor Prithic has asked for kind of a little bit deeper dive into that just to confirm that that is actually how the regulations would be enforced, potentially. But we don't have that research completed for tonight's meeting.
And just out of curiosity, how many of those are full-time rentals?
Well, we don't know where the locations are because this is, the Airbnb data that we have is within a 200-meter accuracy range, so it could be anywhere in that block. So we don't know. Some of them we do know, but a lot of them we do not.
So just for a little context for anyone who's following this, you know, thank you, Sam, for bringing this forward. We've been trying to wrestle with the thing with Airbnb as a threat to kind of displacement. We've been thinking primarily about owner occupancy outside the mile square, and that's why we brought the previous legislation through. We did the moratorium. We did the legislation. That legislation covered everything really but the mile square. And the thought was, let's not be, the perfect be the enemy of the good, and we moved forward on that. But at the planning commission, I think at council, there was like, there was still concern that the threat that Airbnb's posed to the mile square, like, it's not necessarily that they may displace owner occupancy, but long-term rental occupancy is also, those are residents, too. And we also may have hopes that some houses that are currently student rentals may have the opportunity to go back. So the idea that let's not throw, you know, let's not throw the mile square to the wolves and just forget about it. So I appreciate that we can replace the moratorium. I'm hoping it's relatively simple, that we need to make a decision which of these mile-square zoning districts we want to try to rein in and limit. And I think that we, I think it'd be a planning commission conversation and a council conversation. There's not an unlimited number of districts, and some of them are where we all, like, if you look at the R1 MS district, the Northwest Mile Square, South College. Like, I think we're confident that that's an area where residents, non-student residents already live, what we'd like to preserve those. Other districts, I'm not saying we just, it would be less a problem. So anyway, I'm hoping that it could be a minor code change to what we've already adopted to add some of those districts in. I hope it doesn't take six months, but I think it's worth doing. I think we need to answer the question of what's, who has a legal nonconformity? You know, like, is it all permit, you know, I just, I want to make sure that, like, which animals have been let out of the barn already, but try to be careful to not be too permissive. but try to be careful to, to not be too permissive in that. So it sounds like you're wondering, Bill, whether this moratorium needs to extend. I mean, we need to make a, at some point a decision will need to carve out which of the mile squared we want to protect and which one are we okay with seeing these? I don't know whether tonight's the night to do it, I, whether we do that with the moratorium or whether we leave it to the process of putting it to the planning commission, saying which of these districts do we want to protect. Probably not all of them, but I'm not sure tonight we, we're in a position to decide.
I mean, to answer your question, I feel like a home is a home, and if there will be less students in town eventually, maybe, going forward, that some of those homes have an opportunity to become a family's home.
Yeah.
So I see that as an opportunity to make sure that we're protecting all of it would be my preference and then go through the process over the moratorium and see what happens.
Anyone else?
Oh yeah, I think if I'm being fully transparent, I remain a little unconvinced that we need this. In being on the real estate market in the mile square recently, when talking to our Realtor about what type of competition we'd be facing as a family looking to buy a home, Airbnbs were quite literally never mentioned. It was all converting houses into student rentals. So I think that, and in talking to kind of friends who live in the mile square or constituents who live in the mile square, their concern was much more focused around out-of-state landlords who are not enforcing code with their residents, who aren't making sure their properties are maintained. I happen to spend a lot of time at a house that's right across from an Airbnb and it is primarily a student rental for the school year. And then over the summer, they turn it into an Airbnb. There's never trash out on the porch. They take really good care of it. And for houses becoming family homes, I think that's going to be, I also want that. It's going to take a lot of time and effort because a lot of those homes that are currently student rentals have been parsed nine ways to Sunday and have extra kitchens and bathrooms and teeny tiny bedrooms. And so I, like, I don't know that adding the extra work to Sam and his team right now, when we're already going through code rewrites and things, feels like the juice is worth the squeeze for me personally. So that's the little bit of digging that I did. I think I had another point, but I lost it.
If you think of it again.
I will let you know.
Can I respond to that? I mean, cause your point actually reinforces how I feel because that means there's no one opposed to it, right? That means that that's not, it's not currently a problem. And living in a home that used to be a student rental, it's now converted to a family home, it is possible. And I don't think that we should leave it up to the market just because it's not an enemy right now. We know that it can be. So I think that it takes a little bit of foresight and comparing to other cities to see what happens.
Yeah, and I, sorry, I remembered my point. I don't want to lose it. As, if we are looking at a declining student population, that means we will also be looking at a declining population in parents who are going to be coming to stay. So, you know, as somebody who works in prevention, I hear you. I just, I don't know, I think that it's adding an extra workload where we don't necessarily need to when we're going to be opening two really big hotels. And the issue, in my brain, if nobody wants it, then, or nobody's concerned about it, then why are we doing it?
Why are we fixing a problem that doesn't exist?
I mean, the housing market has shown us that this is, this should not be a commodity, right? Housing is a right and it's a limited amount and it costs a lot of money to build new houses. We have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity where we purchased land on Chestnut. That will never happen again, probably, in a very long time. And so when we look at, is this something, something in my mind, pretty simple, that it is not a problem yet? I would like to act on it now. So we know that this is coming, right? Like we know, we know that spooky nook is growing. And so Airbnbs could be a bigger thing over here. When I talk to people in Hamilton, Airbnbs are doing really well because people, and those are taking up these affordable homes for families because of what's happening with Miami. So any event Miami has, the Airbnbs do really well in Hamilton. The more spooky nook becomes popular, that could happen to us. So it's not necessarily just students and parents, but it's the surrounding area.
Okay.
You can go first.
I think Alex made some very good points. Actually, everyone's made good points. I think if this could be done in, is it feasible that it could be done in less than six months? I mean, I'd rather over, you know, kind of under-promise and over-deliver if we do this.
Yeah, we could probably put it on the November planning commission agenda, which would actually have it in front of council in December, which would be effective in January. That would be really rushing things, but it's actually, it would be a very, very short text amendment. It would basically just be adding like one or two zoning districts
It's not, yeah, it's not that complex.
Yeah, it's not that complex, but so it's not that, yeah, it's not that big of a.
We're not looking at possibly extending this. I mean, it says not to extend beyond April first.
No, there's no way we'd need to go that far. And another option, if, if there's kind of a, a split here would be to consider, we're going to be rewriting the zoning code. We'll probably have new zoning districts. You know, they may follow the same boundaries, may have different names. You know, we could revisit this again. There's probably going to be a little bit deeper analysis on what the mile square area looks like. If there's some hesitancy now, there's not a big rush to start new short-term rentals, but I realize a loss of a house here or there does add up. So this could be revisited again in a year if there's hesitancy tonight, or we could put it on the agenda in the future.
Yeah, my turn. So one, I wanted to say that there is a problem, right? Like the bigger picture is that nationwide, there's a housing crisis and locally, there's a housing crisis. And we have specific examples where we have removed houses because of short-term rentals. So I do think there is a problem. My hesitation is just the complexity of it, especially in the mile square. One of the big questions I had, which might be resolved if we shorten the time limit for the moratorium, is will this affect students who need to lease just over J term, for example? Do we have any idea, Sam, if that might be a concern? If their lease runs out at one point and they just want to extend it for, if, if we had kept this going summer too, this would just, as, as it is.
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect them.
Wouldn't be.
Yeah, I, my hesitation, I'm with you a hundred percent on the goal. To try and improve the ability for families to try and get back into the housing market in the mile square. I'm not sure that that's ever going to happen in some of the districts closer to the university, but I think it's more important maybe on the, on the western part. However, if we can get this done by December, why do we need a moratorium? Would be the other question. I mean, do you think that there, and maybe they are, and so I'm asking, do we think that there are people waiting with bated breath to turn some things over into?
The purpose of a moratorium is if someone sees regulations coming, you would take out a permit right now, you know? You would, you would race to secure your rights between now and December, and that's the purpose of the moratorium.
I know what the purpose is. I'm asking whether it's needed.
Well, I, I think that, you know, A, we could have done this, I mean, we could have had that zoning district in the first time. We're kind of coming back to patch. And we, we could have done it right the first time, but I think it's important to not let it go. I, you know, on the parents page, I saw an Airbnb, a new Airbnb listing on South College, which we know is a kind of a mixed family and student area. Every house in those areas we lose is one further away from restoring these as mixed neighborhoods. So, you know, I would prefer to have added these districts in before. It would have been less efficient. We wouldn't have that, have this conversation twice. But, but that was the, the will. So there was a request for a second separate moratorium as opposed to amending the last one. It's here. I think it's, we got a few districts that we would throw in there and other ones. I think it would be a planning commission to look at the district. R one MS, yes. R two MS, no. And, and it would be six lines of character.
So this could probably be done fairly quick.
Yeah, I think it's, and then it's, and then it's a minor code amendment. And then we at least will protect those areas that we see as. I think those adjacent to the university, you know, I think it wouldn't, I don't think it'd be hard to parse out which ones we want to protect and which ones are fine.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's adopted. All right, we'll move then to ordinances. Start with first reading.
I, I was only given a second there. I was going to ask whether we wanted to change the length of moratorium, but we're past that, I guess.
I think Sam has made clear
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna happen, okay.
That he's going to move it forward and so it'll probably be shorter anyway.
That's, that's fine.
That would be better than extending it.
Just give about five seconds more for me to respond.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
I have one more thing too. Just to comment on what Alex said, I think it's a yes and situation because yes, the corporate ownership of homes is a really big problem. This is not an enemy of that, and that is something that we should also be very seriously looking at because we get calls all the time to try to buy our homes by people who are out of state or who knows where they are. So yeah, I agree.
Okay.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Oxford Municipal Code by revising a chapter of Part Seven, Business Regulation Code, Chapter seven forty-four, revising the tobacco retailer license requirements for the sale of tobacco and paraphernalia products in the city of Oxford.
Okay, we are very happy to see that on the agenda. Sam?
Thank you. So there was an ordinance passed almost a year ago to, that was intended to go into effect in January. And there was a delay due to litigation between the city of Columbus and the state of Ohio, as you all know. And Oxford joined the litigation and was able to, as part of that, be able to enforce its local regulation. And now that that is able for us, we wanted to make some tweaks to the ordinance because of the date of compliance and also make some other changes that are mostly minor, but just wanted to clean some things up having some more available options to us for revoking licenses for tobacco retailers. There are twenty-three in the community. We're getting ready to roll out the program. We have a new employee, Benjamin Prodicam, who's here tonight to, to introduce himself and meet you all. And I wanted to just take the opportunity to clean these things up. And we've got January first as our compliance date. And we've been talking to those retailers and letting them know. And everyone seems, you know, thank you for the update kind of things and the feedback we're getting. So I just wanted to invite Ben up
Sure.
To introduce himself real quick.
Let's do that. Welcome, Ben.
Thank you. Been here for about two months now, part-time capacity. And Sam's been great help, kind of learned the ropes. Came from a natural resources background, so a lot of this is new to me, but it's been a good learning opportunity and everybody's been really helpful and supportive in the department. Have gone around and talked to a lot of retailers, have had next to no pushback. A lot of kind of encouraging comments from them, people that were interested in seeing everyone operating under the same set of rules.
Yes.
Best way to say it. So, yeah, everything's been really positive so far and hopefully, once we get, there's a few corporate contacts. You know, it's a little bit harder to chase down the right people for the larger organizations, but we're getting pretty close to having everybody know what's coming. So there's, it's a lot smoother transition and we get everything squared away.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Just give us your name and where you live and we'll give you five minutes.
Mayor Snively and council members. Scott Davie, I serve as Tallawanda's high school principal. And I just want to encourage and support what's going on with, with this legislation. And I guess from, from my perspective, as somebody who, you know, searches and locates these vape devices on a fairly regular basis on behalf of the community, we do have some bad actors in town who are not doing their part to make sure that, that these things are staying in the hands of the people who are of the appropriate age and maturity level to make the decision on how to use them. And so anything we can do to combat that is absolutely appreciated. And we've got some good partners. OPD has partnered with us on some of this. And, and you know, it's, it's great to hear that we have some other folks coming along to help as well to try and keep our kids safe. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. And congratulations to the Tallawanda School District on their recent report card. You should be very proud of that. Yes, Amy, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Amy Masechko, Health and Wellness Coordinator for the Tallawanda School District and Director of the Coalition for a Healthy Community here in the Oxford area. And on behalf of the coalition, I just want to express my gratitude for council and the city staff that have worked so hard to protect the young people in our community. The coalition seeks to make the healthiest choice the easiest choice through community change strategies by incentivizing healthy choices, increasing access, removing barriers, changing the physical design and advocating for policy change. And on behalf of the coalition, thank you for ensuring the health and safety of our young people.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you for the work of the coalition. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel on this ordinance? We're not, for those who are here and, and curious, we're not voting on this tonight because ordinances take two readings. And so we'll take this up at our second meeting in October. Anyone else? Okay, thank you and thank you who, those who spoke on it. Any comments by counsel?
How did y'all calculate the fifteen hundred inhabitants? Like one per fifteen hundred?
So we looked at the number of retailers that we kind of already had. We looked at some other communities around the region and used the census figure. And we also looked at the proximity of retailers to each other as well because both metrics are being used in our case. Some communities have chosen to use only the density one and not the proximity one, and we use both. So it's somewhat arbitrary, but also roughly related to the number of retailers that we have now. We are also looking at, okay, is it, is reducing the number of retailers probably a good thing for the community too? And that, along with the proximity, is kind of moving toward that goal. Could potentially open up some of those retail spaces for other types of businesses in the future if they do close. So I don't know, Jessica, if you have any other, is that pretty close? Okay. Jessica kind of started this. Assistant City Manager Jessica Green started this kind of research as, in response to the community, and then we've kind of taken it from there. So, does that help?
Oh yeah, I'm glad y'all paired both instead of picking one or the other because it certainly seems like the cities that do best are the ones that couple the different regulations. So that's, that's awesome. Thank you.
I just want to thank whoever joined, and our legal staff for joining with Columbus to fight the good fight on this one, you know?
Every once in a while, you win one.
Some, some, well, for now, we have won. For now, we have won. But it is really important for cities to defend our home rule authority. Our legislature would like to preempt us from, and has preempted us over and over again from, from doing what I think we all agree is the right thing to do. And this was such a shameless pandering to the vape and tobacco industry that they would preempt us from regulating this industry that does so much harm to our kids was just infuriating. And again, it's not, the fight's not done yet, but I appreciate, A, that we did the legislation even though we knew there was the threat of, of preemption. And then when the preemption came, the, we collectively being municipalities joining this, didn't lay down and just take it. So for principle, right now at least, I'm, I'm proud of cities for fighting for what's right.
I think it was great that we joined that and let them lead it.
Yeah, so where does it go from here though, Chris? Is this something that our esteemed Supreme Court is going to hear?
I'm not much of a gambler, so I don't know. We've got an election with justices who are running. It seems to me that if there's concern over, say, public health, it sometimes is best left to the local level. You know, there's a baseline above, but there's the local component. We have county health authorities. We sometimes have local and some of the larger cities. So it's a logical extension of that philosophy. So I think there's a compelling argument that this power should continue to rest at local jurisdictions.
So if, if it were to, if, if, if this decision were to be overturned at the state level, we do still have some land use, home rule. I mean, some of the regulation of the tobacco businesses we could do through zoning. Is that still a plan B in case we, this case is ultimately lost?
Sam, do you want to address that?
We have more than one tool to tackle this problem.
That one is actually a lot weaker
That's it.
Because there is, business licensing is not very common in the state of Ohio. And that would be the mechanism for, before someone were to sign a lease if they were renting a property. And so because we don't have business licensing and we don't really have, there's not a lot of support for that in the state, landlords, property managers can rent to businesses and they would be open. rent to businesses and they would be open. And so, yes, if there's a land use regulation, it would have to be after the fact. It just makes it hard to, to, to be welcoming to a business, but also regulating.
But we could still, we could still carve out tobacco and, as a, as a zoning category and, and regulate it that way, right?
Sure, we can. It would just be after the fact. A lot of these, a lot of these, regardless of whether it's tobacco business or not, they're signing leases, five-year leases sometimes. And they're very difficult financially to get out of.
I get. I'm concerned that at some point we, if we need to go to Plan B, that we think about what that Plan B might be.
Yeah, those horses are out of the barn. So...
Who are the other cities in our area that are doing this? Is there anyone?
I know Fairfield. Fairfield is. I'm not sure of others, but I know that in Butler County, a lot of people are kind of watching to see what Fairfield and Oxford are doing. But, yeah, there's, there's several in the, in the state, but I don't know about beyond Fairfield in Butler County.
Thank you, Sam. Any other questions? All right, this will come up at our next meeting. And you can read the second one.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3750, supplemental budget ordinance number five, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2024.
Okay. Hi, Heidi.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. There are several items on the supplemental budget ordinance tonight. First, we have 90,000 additional appropriation is needed for income tax refunds and the retainage that we pay to Rita. To account for these funds, we've increased the budgeted revenue from the Rita reimbursement we received back in May. 95,000 of additional appropriation is needed to adhere to our commitment to enjoy Oxford of 100% of the convention tax collected. Increased budgeted convention tax revenue is required as well. Reduction of budgeted revenue in the amount of $535,801 of OPWC grant funding we do not expect to receive in 2024. A reduction of 150,000 of DTI grant funding that was not awarded this year, as well as the appropriation for the Transit Bike and Pedestrian Plan project in the capital budget for 2024. Revenue of 100, I'm sorry, 17,114,080 and 98 cents and, and the, as well as the appropriation of 18,124,821, 18,124,825 dollars and 65 cents as required for the OWDA loan funding and contract expense for the water softening project. This contract and funding will fall into 2025. Therefore, a reduction in this year's budget is necessary. Increase in interest income of $44,000 in the wastewater fund will allow less of a burden to the fund balance to allow for a transfer to the wastewater capital equipment fund of $53,275 to balance that fund for 2024. $20,000 in additional appropriation for aquatic center salaries and benefits. This additional staffing was required during the open season while a full-time staff member was out on FMLA. We are reducing the appropriation for capital projects included in 2024 but won't be completed in 2024. And they include 300,000 for the water garden fountain replacement, 131,174 for the Uptown Public restroom. A reduction of appropriation of $685 is required for the parking lot improvement fund to balance for 2024. A reduction of appropriation of 43,000 is required for the fire EMS fund to balance for 2024. Several, several of these reduction items are for accounting reporting purposes and not to overstate revenue and more accurately account within the budget for the current fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you, Heidi.
I'll be happy to answer your question.
I know you will. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Any council questions? I think you did a really nice job. And it's all in the agenda for those who want to peruse it in more detail, starting on page 99. Okay, we'll go to second reading.
An ordinance approving the preliminary subdivision and final subdivision applications and plat of 14.48 acres in preparation for a future tractor supply company retail store at 5728 College Corner Pike, Oxford, Ohio 45056 with conditions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Show move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Sam?
No changes.
No changes. That's what we like to hear. We did have a full discussion last time. Is there anyone from the public interested in commenting on this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. And councilors, if you have any further discussion, concerns, call the roll.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted. We'll move then to announcements and communications. City Manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. So, earlier, the proposed fire EMS levy was mentioned. As you know, in order to address the need for additional staffing, the ongoing fiscal deficit in the fire EMS fund, and the need to replace capital equipment, we have to raise additional revenue. As you know, we reached a historic agreement with Miami University. They will be providing $1.27 million for 10 years to our fire EMS fund, Fund 418. This agreement is contingent upon the city's passage in the general election of November 5th, a 2.6 mil 10-year fire EMS real property tax levy. As you know, it will appear on the ballot as issue two. So, the mayor, fire chief, and I have scheduled a presentation of information on issue two with several organizations, including Lions Rotary and Quanis Club. The Oxford League of Women Voters has scheduled a meeting on October 16th in the auditorium at the Knolls of Oxford on Contreras Road. So, we'll be presenting that information on issue two, stressing the importance of the passage of that levy. And earlier, I guess it was Monday, not earlier, but we, the finance director gave you the proposed 2025 budget. And we'll be reviewing that with council at a work session on October 17th at 7:00 PM here in this chamber. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike?
No, thank you. Thank you.
JJ? Heidi? Chief?
Love it, sir.
Casey?
Good evening. A couple of real quick updates. The playground at Mary Day Park, they began selling that today. So, that should be finished and open probably early next week. And we are also starting the new doll park project, which should officially break ground tomorrow at some point. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Casey. Sam?
There's a Thursday night public meeting, next Thursday, October 10th, at the middle school. That is regarding the planning of the rest of the trail loop. We talked tonight about the, the sections that are being completed. And so, the Northern Arc, that we call it, we're going to be, it's a Parking Transportation Advisory Board meeting. And they will be looking at the feasibility studies that have been done over the past several months and analyzing them, taking public feedback, and then making recommendations to city council at the coming meeting. So, that's next Thursday, 6 o'clock at the middle school.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jessica?
I'll just add to Sam's comments that soon, we will be posting an excellent story map created by Zachary Moore that explains each section of the trail. It has a feasibility assessment and kind of a rating scale. It shows the maps. You can zoom in and see pictures. It, it's beautiful. So, take a minute to kind of research that, encourage people to go to look at it if they want to come to the meeting. It gives a lot more information than what we had before. So, I'm really proud of the work that our team has done in the past several months. Also, I want to just let you know, another public meeting is this Thursday with the Housing Advisory Commission. We will, Councilman Ragoo will be talking about the nuisance ordinance and also the development agreement for the proposed Cottage Community Project. So, definitely kind of keeping those projects moving along. I want to say thank you to all the people who were involved in the Hike-A-Thon and October Fest this past week. It takes an army of community volunteers and an army of staff to make those possible and, and what great events on a very hot, hot day. So, thanks to all for that. And then I just wanted to share that I had the honor to present at the International City Manager, City and County Managers Association last week on our eclipse planning and how, you know, we spent 18 months on planning for this large influx of people. And I was really proud to just report on the positive impact of what we call creative placemaking. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Well, I want to say thank you to everybody. I'll be here this weekend for Dad's Weekend. If I see you around, that would be great. I'd enjoy that. It's gonna be my last one, so that's bittersweet. But thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay, Alex?
Yeah, I would echo Jessica's massive thank you to the small army of volunteers that made October Fest and Hike-A-Thon happen on the same day and an incredibly hot day. And not only the volunteers, but to city staff. I mean, that is, I, I saw people at 9:00 AM and I saw them all the way through basically 8:00 PM. And it was incredibly hot. And I don't think I ever saw city staff, even Seth, as he like sprinted back and forth across Uptown Park without a smile on their face. So, thank you to everybody who make events like that happen. It was truly lovely to be a part of. Now that it's October, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we are doing our historic walking tours of Oxford Memorial Cemetery again. They will be on the, not this weekend, they start next weekend on October 12th and will be every Saturday at 11:00 AM through the end of the month. We will be visiting some new folks this year, including some former Miami presidents, Alfred Upham and Robert McFarland. There are also some notable Oxfordians, including somebody who survived the French Revolution and then ended up in Oxford. So, the research has been really interesting. We look forward to having you. Please see the Oxford Parks and Recreation website to register for your spots. I would say they're going fast, but I think you've still got plenty of time. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Shout out.
Thank you for moving the chronic nuisance premises over to, so that we're now at the Housing Advising Committee. I will be there on Thursday, so I'm looking forward to the discussion. And again, the point is to try to reduce the amount of emergency calls that are being sucked up by problem properties. That it, in some places, the police will be called upwards of 10 times a week. It's not an exaggeration at all. And so, it'll be a very good conversation. And then I'm looking forward to whenever we talk about the rest of the ordinances for tenant protection. And just like with the tobacco and, and vaping, we have an opportunity to be leaders in our area and learn from other places of the state to make sure that we have the best tenant protection. Because right now, when I search our code, we really don't have much, if any. So, I'm really looking forward to that. And I know that we can help a lot of families quite a bit to have safe housing.
Okay. Amber?
Nothing for me.
Jason?
Nothing for me tonight either.
David?
So, I, I know it's been said, but I think the events were so big and required so much, it's worth saying thank you again. Though, to host a Hike-A-Thon or October Fest, it's like hosting a party. And if you ever hosted a party, it's a lot of logistics. And it goes across divisions and departments. The weather conditions were tough. And where most of us are enjoying a beer, other people are breaking down tables. And it was really, so it's, it's kind of a heroic. But those, I think people really appreciate those events really like, we, they live in life in Oxford, and I think people really appreciate them. I do really want to express the hope that people do come out to the Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board meeting to talk about the Northwestern Arc. To, to date, the planning of our trail has been relatively simple because it was on Miami land, it was on city land, it was in the public right of way. This portion of the trail to complete it is more complicated. And we've all been around for the conversations that we had two years ago that were very, very passionate. And, and because it was literally people's front yards or their backyards. We, at that time, we had heard a lot of, well, why don't you put it in someone else's backyard? What I think is gonna be really great about this meeting, it really weighs the pros and cons, the costs and benefits of things. And so, we can have a real, informed, mature conversation about what's the best way to complete this trail. Because there's no simple or easy best way. But I really do hope in this case that it's, it's, certainly, I hope the residents who would be most directly impacted come out. But this, this trail belongs to all of us. And a good route will benefit all of us. So, I really do hope people make the time to, to come out and, and share their thoughts. As if we didn't, and the final thing, as if we didn't have enough things going on in October, the Climate Action Steering Committee is partnering with the League of Women Voters to host another Electrification and Efficiency Fair. So, if you're a person who would love to make your home carbon neutral, or you'd like to love to make your home efficient, and/or if you would like to take some of those great federal tax credits that are available under the Inflation Reduction Act, you can learn more how you can do that. You can talk to the vendors and help individually move the city of Oxford towards this goal of carbon neutrality. So, that is Wednesday, October 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Kramer Elementary School. Advertising will be going out soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I just want to also thank our staff and everybody who worked on Hike-A-Thon and October Fest. For Hike-A-Thon, if you, if people haven't been there before, it's really cool. It's not just people hiking. There are a lot of displays and things that you can look at. There were, there was a raptor there, which I spent some time looking at that and talking to the naturalists. And there was an EV, electric vehicle demonstration and show there. So, I mean, there was a whole lot going on. And I hope that it grows in the future and that more people take advantage of it. For October Fest, I guess, two things I would say. A, it was great again, but I think that advanced planning is really essential because for an October Fest, more than anything else, you really need to be careful in planning it vis a vis other events like Cincinnati, October Fest, and other things like that that could be competing. The other thing is, I had a long talk with a couple of, of restaurant owners on High Street. The comment is one that I think we need to have some discussion of at some point. And so, I'm just suggesting it as a topic. And that is, do we really want all the food trucks? If those food trucks are competitive with and take away business from the uptown businesses that we wanted to support by having the event in the first place. And in some cases, there were people there who were selling things that were directly in competition with and took away from our local businesses, which means that they're now questioning, why should they even be involved in it? And should they even support it? So, I think this is a serious issue that we need to contemplate as we plan ahead for next year. We've got time to do that. But I, I think for my, I can only speak for myself, but I think these things are primarily for our local businesses, to support them and to support our uptown, and to support and give entertainment to our community. So, it's worth talking about. So, that's my thought. Let's go watch the debate. All those in favor of adjournment, I would take a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.